Yes, and I also just now started recording, so it's good that we didn't start. Yeah, I'm Sarah Johnson. I am the volunteer and membership coordinator for Mode Shift Omaha. Also, I'm one of the founding members about 10 years ago, so excited to see you all today. Oh, I'm also running for city council District One, but today on Mode Shift.
Cool. Thanks, Sarah. And this is Liz Beevy. I'm the chair of the board of Mode Shift. And yeah, have been in Omaha for about six years. Get around by bike and walk and bus sometimes. But yeah, I will, yeah, let's just keep doing a quick round if people wanted to say your name. About yourself. John, do you want to kick it off? You're the-
Yeah, mine's John. I'm the John. Okay, thank you. Yes, John Perrin. So if it helps you in any way to know who I am, I mean, line to get my first round of COVID shot on Monday. So that puts me in a group that maybe Clyde is in, and that's about it. So I did notice a little spontaneous, I call it interview with Biden. He was out walking in the, out walking in the front yard. And of course, news people were around there, and he's with his dogs. And one of the questions was, the one dog is noted to be older than the other ones. And so he, he revealed that at one point in time, they asked their veterinarian what to do to keep their dog healthy and active, and the answer was getting a younger dog. So that's why I hang around with Mode Shift.
Thanks, John. All right, maybe we could try to be a little quicker, but that's a good story. Cindy, you want to go?
Hi, this is Cindy. I'm a small business owner. I'm on the Mode Shift Walkability team, and I live near Seventy Second and Dodge.
And Cindy does a lot of work to try to make it a more walkable area around Seventy Second and Dodge. So we all appreciate all of that. Will?
Yeah, Will Green. I'm on the Mode Shift board. I help run the Omaha Missing Middle Housing Campaign.
Great. Jonathan, do you want to say quickly who you are, and then I'll give you more time? We'll circle back in a minute.
Jonathan Lathan. I'm currently running for city council District Two. And I, like John, am able to get my COVID vaccine. Actually, I need to go sign up to the VA to do it, but I just found out that they're trying to push vets through for COVID vaccines. So I probably need to go get my name on that list as well.
Oh, wow. Well, congratulations. Marion? Oh, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Again, there we go.
Yep.
I'm Marion Fay, and I am, I live in the Met Park neighborhood, but I am here at Mode Shift representing the growing transportation needs of the families here in the Miller area. I work for the Miller Public Schools.
Oh, great. Welcome. Great to have you.
Clyde Anderson, and I'm on the Walkability and Transit teams at Mode Shift. And I got my shot a week ago, and I was really impressed with all the volunteers that are manual directing traffic. And I couldn't bike up there. I had to drive. But otherwise, it, everything's really going well.
Cool. Well, congrats, Clyde. We're glad to hear that. Steven?
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Steven Abraham, and I'm one of the candidates running along with Jonathan for city council District Two. And yes, I did get my COVID shot. I work in the healthcare professional field. So as a play deck provisional license alcohol drill counselor. So we were some of the first people to get our shot. So good morning, and thank you for having me.
Great. Thanks for being here. And we'll give you a little bit longer time to introduce yourself in a second. Lori?
Hi, I'm Lori Elliott Bartle. I serve on the Walkability team at Mode Shift and have been involved with it off and on for a long time. That's enough.
Lori's also an artist and does lots of cool stuff. Kai?
Hey, what's up, y'all? My name is Kai. I'm a student at UNO, and I'm just interested in making Omaha more equitably friendly for transportation.
Cool. Manny?
Hey, everybody. I'm Manny. On the bike team here with Mode Shift, and you know, working on lots of stuff in North Omaha. So hi.
Yeah, I think we're all excited about the North Omaha Trail project that you're working on. That's great. Um, Brian? Oh, okay. He isn't, he's saying hello in the chat. Amanda, you want to say hello?
Sure. And Amanda, I am on the Walkability team and just like to walk and sort of bike, and that's about it.
And Amanda used to be in Sarah's role and did a lot of really great work, but just transitioned. Sarah, Angie?
Hi, everyone. Angie Aguberry. I am in District Three and happy to be here to hear from candidates. And I'm at University of Nebraska Omaha for my day job. It's great to see everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Angie, for being here. Marissa?
Hi, I'm Marissa. As you remember, I walked by a bus. I don't know if you-
Cool. Thanks, Marissa. Derek? Derek, are you there? Maybe you are doing something else, but Derek is on the-
No, I'm here. I'm here. Yeah, no, sorry. I am doing other things. I have to walk my kid to school here in a minute. That's why I just went on the mobile phone. And so we're going to walk to school. But I'm Derek Bab. I'm on the Mode Shift board. I do a lot with walking and biking. That's my primary mode of transportation. So I'm just more interested to see that in all parts of Omaha.
Cool. Thanks, Derek. Who else do we have? Kevin, are you there?
Yes. Hi, Kevin Flatwoods, farmer, member of Mode Shift, interested in Walkability and Transit.
Yeah, great to have you here, Kevin. Kevin was our, was recently our chair and did a lot of good work and hosted these coffee chats in the past. So appreciate all that work. Great. Well, I'll do a quick intro of Mode Shift, and then we'll let our candidates introduce themselves. And I have a couple of questions for them. And then we hopefully will have a big chunk of time at the end for questions from the audience. So yeah, and I think, you know, people know that this coffee chat is part of our sort of broader series of we're also doing member meetings where we're hosting mayoral candidates. And, you know, we think that, you know, the mayor and city council are really important in terms of determining transportation policy in Omaha. So that's why we're really interested in that. We also know that we have a strong mayoral system, which makes the mayor especially important. But we're excited around city council as well and think, you know, there's a lot of opportunities there. You know, and the city of Omaha has commitments to Vision Zero, to zero transportation deaths on our roads. They have an Active Living Advisory Committee, so have a commitment to active living and supporting that. There's talk about stopping the brain drain, attracting, retaining more young people. So we also have an award-winning Complete Streets policy. And so we think that, you know, those goals really, you know, meeting those goals and achieving those things really align with, I think, what a lot of us want to see in Omaha. So we're definitely excited to potentially work more with folks on city council, with mayor, to help get to those goals and make Omaha a better place for everyone to live, work, and play, and make it easier and better for everyone to get around. So with, with that, I think I will let our candidates introduce themselves. Trying to think. I guess you guys can have up to three minutes to introduce yourselves if you want to say who you are and why you're running. And then we will, and then I will have a couple of other questions and give you probably two minutes to answer each of the other follow-up questions. But we'll start with the introductions. So Jonathan, do you want to kick it off?
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that. All right, so good morning, Mode Shift team. Thank you for having me on your coffee call this morning. I was pleasantly surprised when I got the email because it shows that the word is getting out that there are more viable candidates that are actually running for the city council offices. And that's amazing, especially with the things that have been going on in the city, especially over this last year. But my name is Jonathan Lathan, and I'm running for District Two City Council because for too long, our community has been neglected physically, economically, and socially. I was born and raised in Omaha and am currently raising five children here as well. My mother was a sharecropper who earned a master's degree from UNO and taught in OPS for 32 years. My father's an Omaha native who graduated from Tech High School, is a Vietnam veteran, so service was instilled in me from a young age. I carried that work ethic with me to the United States Army, serving for 14 years and going on two combat tours, one to Iraq and one to Afghanistan. During my tour in Iraq, I actually earned a Combat Action Badge for actively engaging the enemy in an ambush on my convoy. I joined the military because I didn't see the opportunity here to grow, thrive, and raise a family, opportunities that young professionals here are struggling with to find even today. After serving our country, I came back and saw the same problems still exist in District Two that were here before I left. I saw a community that lacked investment, infrastructure, and involvement from both state and city levels. Our community deserves intentional economic development. We hear about the millions of dollars that have been poured into the community over the last 12 years, but that development isn't supporting the residents who actually live here. In a large area of the district, we still see empty lives everywhere, boarded up businesses on main streets, and property that's being held for people who don't even live in our community. Our community deserves higher-paying jobs and not to have to drive to other areas of the city to make an actual livable wage. The jobs that have been recently brought to my district aren't jobs that are going to put us at the median income of the rest of the city. There are several acres down by the airport that could be used to bring some type of industry jobs, such as transportation, where jobs start off paying 25% more annually than what our residents make now. Also, those types of jobs don't come with all the barriers that our community is normally faced with when seeking jobs that do pay above minimum wage. Our community deserves safe and affordable housing. On average, residents of District Two spend 40% of their gross income on rent alone. Housing and Urban Development says that people who pay over 30% may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, and even medical care. These are all basic human rights that regardless of race, gender, social standing, everyone should have access to. The community also deserves a criminal justice system that understands the community. Police interacted residents of my district 30% higher rate than any other area of the city. That means they're 30% more likely to become a statistic. We have to restructure what community policing looks like in order to strengthen that relationship. It's time for a new generation of leadership. The community deserves a leader who's on the ground and in touch with the people, a leader who believes in fair and equitable treatment for all residents. Zip codes do not define us, and they should not divide us. We've been told what we have for the past 12 years is good enough. It's time to make that change. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I was right at three minutes. Good job. Steven, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. One of my passions is transportation. I grew up on that. So I'll go ahead and introduce myself. Thank you, Mode Shift, for having me. My name is Steven Abraham, and I'm running for Omaha City Council of District Two. I'm a born and raised native of near North Omaha and grew up in Logan-Fatnel Housing Development. I've been married to my beautiful wife, Keshala, going on 14 years. We have eight children and own our home here in the district. I feel it's important to be totally invested in the area you serve because it shows long-term commitment in the community and services that will be provided there. As a former commissioner of Omaha Housing Authority, I took part in the strategic planning and development of Spencer and South Terrace, which included residents as part of the strategic planning. I know it's important to include the voice of the community and processes for my district, and will continue to do so once elected. I also believe in boosting homeownership. Right before leaving the housing authority, me and my fellow commissioners released 1,000 Housing Choice vouchers, and later, another 3,000 vouchers, which will boost homeownership. Also believe in job creation opportunities. That's why within the Spencer and South Terrace developments, small business opportunities will be available along with access to healthcare services that include counseling. This will help address disparities that seem to go unheard. But as a voice for the voiceless amongst policymakers, I wanted to make sure that quality services were available. I will work closely with neighborhood associations and local businesses so that they are always informed about grants and financing opportunities to strengthen their role in our district with the ability to become self-sufficient and more mobile. The traditional role of a city council person is to take the issues of their district concerning infrastructures, series like potholes, trash collection, snow and strong storm debris removal, like what we just seen with the rolling blackouts and the strong snowstorm that we had recently, and city park upkeeps. Also addressing healthy food options, housing disparities, and empowering returning citizens and working with law enforcement for better community relationships. With my experience of being a community health worker at Charles Drew Health Center and a dayhouse manager at Siena Francis House, where I helped individuals that were returning citizens, veterans, and chronic homeless, I know I have the lived experience, education, and work history to make new necessary changes. As far as my education, I have a chemical dependency counseling degree from Metro Community College and a bachelor's in behavioral science from Bellevue University. I feel this will be helpful with addressing issues in my district. Thank you for this opportunity to show my candidacy.
Great. Thanks for being here. Okay, and I think we will move on to questions. I don't think I've missed somebody who's running, though there are a lot of people running for that seat, but everyone was invited. I guess I should make sure and say. Let's see. So first question, and I will give you guys two minutes to answer this. And I was holding up time cards, but you all both finished right on time, so maybe you don't need that. First question, much of our current transportation infrastructure excludes people who cannot drive for reasons of age, ability, or financial means. What would you do to take, to make sure that Omaha accommodates transportation needs? So including equitable access to employment, commerce, and services of all citizens? Steven, do you want to start off on this one?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to answer this question. This is a very important question for our community, especially here in District Two. Like I've mentioned before, I was a commissioner for Omaha Housing Authority. So I worked with MAPPA, and I worked with other transportation organizations through executive staffs to make it more mobility for our residents. As you know, we also have the largest, well, Omaha Housing Authority serves the largest refugee population here. And a lot of those individuals, once they come to our country, they're used to biking and walking to places to get them to where they need to be. So we wanted to make sure that we started doing strategic planning encircled around transportation, reliable transportation, like light rail or electric cars or electric bikes. That's where you see the increase with even the city increasing that. I would like to increase that more. And then with our senior population, our elders in the community, making it more reasonable for them to get around to the grocery store and to see their loved ones. But during the pandemic of COVID-19, something that we've never seen before is making it very difficult to do so. So being innovative as far as that measure for our elders in our community is something I will always, always take seriously. That would include maybe more viable transportation, safe transportation. The other thing is that we also have this, this food desert, you know? So I would look into, there's this plan in other cities where they have individuals that they get food through these programs. It's almost like a universal income where they're getting it through the, being diabetic or if they have different illnesses, they can qualify. It's not something like SNAP benefits, but I think that will help with getting individuals to where they need to be. Thanks.
Cool. Thanks. Jonathan?
Morning. As far as it comes to transportation, District Two specifically, we have to start with infrastructure. I mean, there's some areas of our district where we don't even have walkable sidewalks. So when we can get those types of issues resolved from the beginning, there's grant funding, there was a $200 million bond that was put in a couple of years ago to repair streets. Let's get that transferred over to sidewalks and just generally taking care of some of the infrastructure issues that we do have in North Omaha. Also, we need to focus on the complete street model. We do have to understand that everybody doesn't drive. And even down here, transportation is one of the barriers for getting jobs in Omaha. If you can't, if you don't have a car, you can't get to those higher-paying jobs. Like I said, I live in District Two, but I work out at Warner. So that's a 30-minute drive every day. I couldn't imagine trying to catch a bus out there or trying to do some other things. So you have to understand that that's one of the biggest problems that we have. One thing that is readily able to do as far as transportation is concerned is we need some type of orbit system that goes north and south. I think the city, they made a good attempt when they put Orbit going up Dodge Street from east to west. But that doesn't help service the districts of our community. So if we can get something going north and south between the transit centers as some type of orbit systems, then I think that that would help at least the residents of my district and even the residents of South Omaha. That'll help bring, that'll help get us out of the district, and that'll help bring people back into the district if we can get a system like that going down here in this area.
Cool. Yeah, I think we are all excited about a North-South BRT, and that's one of the things that we are advocating for. All right, we will move on to the next question. We are excited that Omaha has committed to Vision Zero, which I mentioned earlier, along with, you know, cities around the world who have made that commitment with the goal of ending traffic deaths for all users on our streets and roads. So I guess it's sort of a couple of questions here, but do you support that? And then if so, what is your vision for the work of the newly hired Vision Zero coordinator? And how do they help us get there to zero traffic deaths? I guess we'll switch it this time, and Jonathan, all of you go first.
All right. So I don't know much about the Vision Zero plan, but what I can tell you is, you know, you talking about reducing traffic deaths, that that's always a great thing that we want to do when it comes to reducing deaths. There are ways to do that. Said, you can talk about, you know, as far as in vehicles. I know this sounds kind of bad because I speed all the time. But, but being able to, you know, enforce those speed limits, that would be one of the biggest things that we could do with working with the coordinator. 75 North down here is a, is a speedway. I think the speed limit is 60, and people go 80 at a minimum down here, flying between Sorensen and getting on the interstate. So having more enforcement, I know, like I said, I know that sounds kind of counterproductive, but you have to do that in order to reduce, to reduce the traffic deaths here. Even such things as the bike lane that's on 30th. We need to make sure. I don't think I've ever seen anybody not driving that bike lane that's going down 30th also. So if we can get more people paying attention to that, then that also will help reduce the traffic deaths that we have in the community. But I do look forward to learning more about Vision Zero. I'd love to get with the coordinator and kind of see what the plans are going forward. But any program that is made and put in place to help limit deaths, that's always something that I'm proposing.
Great, thanks. And you ended early. Steven?
Yeah, you know, this is a touchy subject because I've had two loved ones die within the last five years of individual speeding in the community. You know, they were mothers of their children. They were doing everything right, and they were killed by an individual speeding through a stop sign. That is frequently happening within our district, especially over off of Ames, where you're going from 66 in Ames to 72nd. There's a record amount of accidents in that location. So I work with the city planning department to address that by putting cameras there and also asking them, hey, is there an innovative idea to increase more of the stoppage between that area? Because individuals are flying past lights, and I'm a father, just like Jonathan is, of young children, and we want those children to be safe. So, you know, it's a very, you know, because individuals are going to work, they're rushing to work. That's another issue. We have about 70% of our individuals that live in District Two working outside of District Two. They're, they're not working in District Two. That leaves about 30% of individuals here to work in the businesses here. So, you know, Division Zero, I know a little bit about it, the coordinator, but I will be willing to work with that person and to address the issues that we're having with traffic deaths.
Thanks, Steven, and thanks for sharing your stories. That's hard to hear. But I think, yeah, we all want to see less of that, so hopefully we can work together to do that. All right, another question. What is your assessment of the current capital improvement program or CIP process and outcomes? How could it be improved? I guess Steven will switch it around again and start with you.
Yes, the capital improvement programs, that's another interesting subject matter. Currently, in our city, we have quite a few issues. We're seeing money being spent, I would consider to be wastefully, within our city, and it's not being correctly appropriated to where it's needed. You know, one of the first things I did was look at the charter. I know Jonathan, he mentioned that as well. Looked at the charter. I looked at how money is being directed to different services. And there's a few things that I would change. One of the things I would change is to address mental health issues. One of the things, transportation issues, like we've mentioned before, with the Orbit system moving north to south. We know a lot of those individuals that work out of other, work into other districts depends on transportation. In regards to, you know, just the, the, I would say, the policing. And I'll just be frank, there's a lot of individuals that take back routes and, you know, kind of go the other way to avoid law enforcement or to avoid the highway system. And that's how, actually, both times where my, my, my family members were killed, those individuals were avoiding law enforcement. They were driving legally, and they was trying to get to where their destination was and blowing past stop signs throughout the whole district. So in regards to the, in regards to the question, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to look at when it comes to the, to those policies and procedures. But I feel that I will most definitely address it appropriately when the time comes.
Thanks, Jonathan.
So I believe that everything with the capital improvement program comes down to transparency. We get this manual every year that it shows you five years of what the city plans on improving on in your community. But the residents don't know that. We don't know that they're going to fix a pothole on 30th and Dodge in two years. We don't know if they're going to put, you know, my district specifically, right now, one of the big projects is the riverfront down there by the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge. People don't realize that that is District Two. You know, they're like, oh, that's north downtown is what they like to call it. No, all that Bob Carey pedestrian- You know, they're like, oh, that's north downtown is what they like to call it. No, all that Bob Carey pedestrian bridge and they're talking about putting that new museum down there on the riverfront. That's all District Two projects that are in this CIP manual. But the thing is, like I said, the residents don't know what's going on. The residents may feel that repairing a different part of the district is more important than what the city's mandating is being prepared by this CIP program. So you'd have to start with transparency and say, okay, where do you think that we need to start as a district? Where do you believe that the most important infrastructure developments are being made? And like I said, it's over a five-year plan. We get these CBDG grants, the Community Development Block Grants. And we don't see what projects these funds are going for. Housing Urban Development gives the city of Omaha four million dollars a year for just the CBDGs alone. So like I said, if we are able to tell the residents, okay, we've got four million dollars that we're getting from Housing and Urban Development to do these Community Development Block Grants, what uh what could we use that for to better our district? And I think, like I said, if we start using those funds to invest in fixing the sidewalks, to invest in getting more bike lanes, to put more into the bike trail, then we could have more uh people would be more interested in what we have going on as a district. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Um. Yeah, I think we, Mode Shift would say there are a lot of problems with the CIP and that some of that is connected to the charter, as you mentioned. And um we've done a lot of work around trying to make it more transparent and digging into what what is, what projects are there? Which ones get funded? What actually happens versus what do we say is gonna happen? Um and we've done some mapping of where the money goes. And I think it's not going to be a surprise to either of you that most of that money is not going to District Two. A lot of it is going out west and it costs a lot of money to maintain those big wide roads um and to keep widening them. Uh so that's where a lot of that goes. Um I'll try to share a link to that map in the chat if it's useful for you all uh as a reference. Um and I think we will open it up to audience questions. We already had a couple of good ones come in in the chat. Lee, yours seems like a pretty short, quick question. Do you want to ask it?
Yes, Jonathan answered it directly to me in the chat and yeah, you know, it's always a difficult question, sixteen, twenty-four or thirtieth or three semi-main streets. And Jonathan replied that he thought twenty-fourth would be the best North Omaha all the way through this to the South Transit Center, but that that's one of those political questions that um needs to be answered, but the city isn't even kicking it around. But Jonathan, thank you. I think that I think that's a good answer.
Can I just uh jump on the end of that that uh question or that idea? Um I know, like, in regards to that, um there there's a someone's phone ringing, but uh. Cool. So uh in regards to the north-south BRT, right now they're working on a street skate plan for twenty-fourth Street, right? Um and that's come up. Um I guess my question would be is how would you all support ongoing infrastructures? Uh projects like the street skate uh plan and those sorts of things, uh you know, when you're elected to office?
Can I, so you know, one of the things i- in regards to gaining the CNI grant was all due to HUD points that was centered around different issues like transportation, services and infrastructure. Because you can't build new buildings over bad infrastructure. So you have to take those 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 funds that you get and you know how to incorporate them. The the community block development grants, that's all based off of property value, school bonds. There's a combination of things that's uh is is based off of. And we're not even gonna go into the TIF funding, but we can. We go into the TIF funding. And you mentioned earlier about the money uh going west. That's why I mentioned about uh seventy percent of our individuals are working outside of our district. So when it comes to redevelopment processes, we see the growth in Ralston, we see the growth in Bellevue. We see the growth in these other different areas because they have the financial means. Their businesses and schools and houses are matching up to what we're seeing as far as development. When we come to District Two, we don't see that. We see uh broken down homes, the facades of buildings deteriorating. So I will be a a proponent for estab- re-establishing the facade grants to make sure that local businesses have the opportunity to look and present well within the community. The other thing, infrastructure, all these the new developments are geared around replacing broken infrastructure, walkways. And like you said, the city hasn't committed a a dying in regards to their their motivation to to participate in certain instances. So it was up to individuals that worked in the community, had boots on the ground, to really be the voice for the voiceless, to let them know like, hey, listen, we need to get this done. So.
Great. Jonathan, do you wanna?
Absolutely. Uh what was your question again, May? So that way I can make sure I answer the full question for you.
Yeah, no problem. Um we talked a lot about like the north-south BRT. Um and right now they're working on a street skate plan for North Twenty-Fourth Street. Um so my my question in regards to that is like, how would you support like ongoing infrastructure projects if elected? Like the twenty-fourth Street uh street skate?
So supporting ongoing infrastructure, the first thing, again, everything comes down to the community and the residents. You have to figure out what the residents on twenty-fourth Street need as far as that project is concerned. Uh again, I'm not a subject matter expert on anything as far as transportation, infrastructure, building. But one thing that we have to do, we have to collaborate at a city level. We have to get with the rest of the city council members that were in the rest of the districts. Because again, we talked about this charter and we talked about earlier the strong mayoral system. So if we want something passed for a street skate for twenty-fourth Street, I'd have to work with the representative for District One, District Three, District Four, District Five to get votes we needed to get that money to come into the district. The only way that any of this is gonna work is through working together and collaboration. So that, once in office, that would be the the only way, because I don't think that, you know, a- as Ms. Veezy said earlier, the money is going to other areas of the city. So we're not being advocated for in District Two as much as we should be at that level in that position currently.
Thanks.
Great. Um we've got a bunch of other questions. Let's see. Cindy, I think you had the one of the first questions. Do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, my question is, um right now, this even though the city says that they look at sidewalks as modes of transportation, there is actually nothing written in the Muni codes or in policy. And um for that reason, I feel like all all of our sidewalks have been let go, especially with that two hundred million dollar street improvement bond. Um Des Moines has it written, Kansas City has it written, um even Council Bluffs has a better definition of sidewalks than Omaha does. So would you be willing to really support and work with Mode Shift to help us get um sidewalks seen as modes of transportation? Because that would also probably, I mean, really would increase funding.
All right. So with the with the sidewalks, again, like I mentioned this earlier, some of our areas of the district don't even have sidewalks to walk on. So we're talking about uh programs, you know, to prevent deaths of people, like when they're having to walk in the streets. Even now, I'll tell you, I can go up my street right now and there's still unshovelled sidewalks. That's horrible that, you know, they talk about having that enforced after, you know, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, but it snowed, what, Tuesday? And we still have unshovelled sidewalks in our district. Well, the charter is up for review. I think twenty-twenty-three is when uh we can review the charter in the city. So at that point, that would definitely be time again to collaborate with the other city council members to make sure that we can get sidewalks put in as a mode of transportation. In the meantime, you know, in in April or in May after the general election, we as city council members can always pr- uh produce ordinances is what it would be. You know, we can say, hey, I, Jonathan Lathan, City Councilman Jonathan Lathan, can write an ordinance saying I want sidewalks to be considered as a mode of transportation with a sunset date of when the charter is being rewritten. And that's what people don't understand, the the power of your city council members are. If they can write or amendments to do so many other things within the city, you know, for these bars and they can do amendments for noise ordinances. And so why why wouldn't you write an ordinance that could help the people of your community and the residents say, hey, you know, this is what I want to do, work with the other city council members. It takes those four votes. Again, five votes and the mayor cannot veto it under our strong mayor system. So why would you not work with your other city council members to get those five votes? Get our sidewalks labeled as mode of transportation like the other major cities we always compare ourselves to. We're always Kansas City. We're always Denver. We're always, you know, Atlanta. No, we're Omaha. Let's get Omaha up to that standard of those other cities and then we can start expanding overall.
Great, thanks. Uh Stephen.
Yeah, this is a important thing. Um you know, when I was growing up and on on twenty-fourth Street, Logan Farnell, like I mentioned before, the sidewalk seemed to be um kept up. They were trying to do things. I think this goes back to the um the low employment as far as public works department. Because if you don't have enough staffing to maintain or create sidewalks, then you're gonna see the lack of. Then the other thing is it becomes complex because when you start putting sidewalks on people's personal property, then the individuals have the right to ask for a property tax reduction. As we've been seeing today, um in today's news, you know, uh governor has um put in place something to reduce property tax or give you a property credit. That may come up if we start implementing these sidewalks. Now, I'm not against it. I'm just want to bring out the facts of reality. Because once you start putting things on people's personal property, people feel a certain way, especially when it's done by the city. It's important to work as a team um to get things done. And like you said, there's only five votes that's needed to override the 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 mayor. So working as a a a team to get that done is important. I think when it comes to the population, you know, uh the city of Omaha itself in comparison to Kansas City, which is a metroplex, you know, I think that they are justifying that we don't have a population to justify the needs for sidewalks. So we would most most definitely do, I would embark in doing a study of comparables and say, hey, listen, we have the population. We have the funds. Why aren't we doing this? You know, so um that's what, that's one of the things that I I feel, you know, will catapult us in a different direction, having advocates um to really point out statistically by data that we need these sidewalks.
Thanks. Um. Got a lot of questions here. Um Kai, you, I guess, had a good one. Do you want to ask that?
Yeah, I can go ahead. Um so first of all, I want to say thank y'all for answering all the questions so far. Um but I wanted to talk about community involvement and awareness. Um like when you were talking about that project that's downtown, I had no idea that was District Two. What would, what would y'all do in terms of like raising awareness for new projects?
I I can, I can answer that. Um so uh my experience of involving residents in new developments is important to me. Uh my mother, she was the Douglas County Housing Authority Commissioner uh back in the seventies where her and Dorothy Ury and uh Nellie Webb sued Omaha Public Schools and HUD because of the living conditions and the inability to get individuals out of their uh homes. And that led to the Portability Act, uh which is important right now to this day. Uh the re- uh reformulation of section eight. What that did was involve the community's voice and they combined together and said that enough is enough. We are, we don't, we're not gonna deal with these issues anymore. And so uh that was instilled in me to make sure that the residents have a voice. And as far as community participation, uh one of my my, part of my platform is conflict resolution centers. Conflict resolution centers are established to be employing individuals within the community. So there will be more community involvement. Because once, when I was growing up, we used to have block parties. Simple, simple things like that. When we had block parties, we got to know our neighbors. We got to know the young people. We got to know the middle age. We got to know our elders and we were connected. So having those conflict resolution centers within the community, um I think is a tool necessary to uh bring back that um that sense of ownership, but also uh togetherness. Because in so many, in so many ways, we feel divided and we need to be the bridge uh to to mend those uh broken processes within our community.
Cool, thanks. I know my block still has block parties and I appreciate that, though, since COVID, we haven't really uh had one, unfortunately. Jonathan, you want to go?
So when it comes down to community involvement and awareness of things that are being done in the district, uh this is a term that came up a while ago. We haven't talked about it uh probably since the first forum I was on. We have to get some form of participatory budgeting within the city of Omaha. In order for your residents to be engaged, they have to be part of the budget of what's going on. Again, like I said, you don't even know, uh well, you know, you were unaware that part of the capital district is District Two. So all of that stuff down there, mowing curlys, all that capital stuff, that is technically zoned as District Two. Like I said, the residents may not have been aware that, oh, this is where our funding is going. They may have wanted it to go somewhere else. So when you got a form of participatory budgeting where the residents have an input and where the funds are going within the district, that's definitely a way to get involved because everybody's gonna say, you know, that they think that or everyone's opinion of how they feel that the money should be spent is way more important than just a certain group of people saying where that money should go. So you have to get that input. Um as far as the awareness, you know, to have those town hall meetings. You know, right now we can do everything over Zoom. Uh one thing that a lot of people may not know is since the COVID restrictions came in place, you can actually zoom into the city council meetings now. So that would be important to know. Uh when there are projects and things coming up, look at the agenda. Say, hey, we see that Holy Name Family Housing is gonna get five hundred thousand dollars to build homes in your community. Are you a proponent or an opponent? You can come into those meetings and see that. Uh I've been in meetings where they've discussed trails. I've been in meetings where they've discussed a class A electric bike as opposed to a class C electric bike. And I have no idea about it. But when you're in those meetings, you learn about that type of stuff. So that's how you raise that awareness. You have to know first, so you can let your community know and then open it up for a community input and for a community to uh give you feedback on how they feel that those funds should be spent.
All right. And just one more question after that. Would y'all consider changing the hours that the town call, the town hall meetings are? Because like, for instance, I work from like nine to five or something. I I can't get to the meetings because they'd be at like ten or something in the morning. So.
What, and I think, Kai, you're talking about city council. Doesn't that start at two P M on Tuesdays? But yeah, I work during the day and have a hard time making it to two P M meetings. But do you guys want to answer that maybe quickly?
Yeah, I'd actually be all for that. That has come up so many times since I've been running for office. And everybody, we're all on the same page here. You know, luckily I have a schedule. I work seven on, seven off, which is kind of crazy. But I'm actually able to go to those meetings on my off week. But, you know, with that being said, we're losing citizen and resident input with the meetings being at that time. We're losing input for, you know, when the police contract was up, we're, you know, mask mandates. The residents aren't able to voice their concerns accurately with the time being at two P M on a Tuesday. Uh we would have to find a a, you know, there's never gonna be a good time for anyone. But I think that the meetings would have to go later into the night. They'd have to probably start about six. Um they probably had to be between six and eight because most people get off work five, five-thirty-ish. I mean, me, I had to find a sitter because I've got kids, you know, if we were to move the meetings to that time. But moving them to later in the day and then maybe a different day of the week uh would be the most beneficial for the community to voice their concerns on uh community ideas and actually be participating in the city council meetings.
Yeah, I have to agree. I mean, moving it to a different day, a different time will be very appropriate for individuals to give the accurate response of the things that's going on within the city. You know, as a, I I bring, I sound like a broken record, but as a commissioner for Omaha Housing Authority, there was an issue with a lot of our meeting times. So we made it accessible for the residents to take place in those meetings by adjusting the time and adjusting the date. And and also video conference, you know, if you have access to Zoom, then we we made it available for those residents to access some of our meetings. You know, that started back in two, that'd be a little bit before the pandemic. So I was a proponent of that and I will still be a proponent as well moving forward and being elected to city council.
Great, thanks. And I guess we, you know, I could say that there are examples of other groups, like you were just saying, like Omaha Public Power District. I know they moved their meetings to be later, like four P M. So not maybe the best, most successful time, but it is easier for me to make a four P M. meeting than one at like two or noon. So, great. Lots of other questions and stuff in the chat. I think Derek had a good question around he's walking his kid to school. So I guess I'll read his question. It's about using design to make roads safer. And, you know, we, and most of us talk about this a lot, that like people drive really fast on the streets around town. But part of the problem is that you can drive that fast on the streets and you don't, you know, if the lanes were a little more narrow or there were, you know, other sort of design things that made you feel like you couldn't drive that fast. So Derek is asking about that, designing to make roads safer and reduce the need for police enforcement, which I think we probably all agree here is not equally, is not equitable in the way that police enforcement is used in our community. Anybody want to go first? Jonathan, you are muted first.
Okay. Alright, this whole Zoom thing is kind of kind of back and forth with the with the mute buttons. So definitely, design is an important part in addressing transportation safety. One thing, again, like I said, I live on Forty Third and Fourth. I live on a huge hill. And as soon as I moved in, the neighbors were like, don't park your cars in the driveway because in the wintertime, cars are gonna jump and total out your cars. My neighbors have had two cars totaled out because there's nothing there. So I called the city and I tried to get a speed bump put in front of my house. They won't put a speed bump there because they say that it'll stop traction going up and down the hill, which is understandable, but you can put a dip there then. Don't put a bump, put a dip. A speed dip isn't going to cause any, you know, concerns or backups when there when there's slow weather outside. So that's something that I would think about there. And then as far as walking safety to school, there's a place, where's it at, down there? It's right at the end of Seventy Second, and I know everybody probably knows that that's been driven in area because everybody gets tickets there. There's an elementary school right down there, Seventy Second and Giles ish, and there's a huge overpass that goes there. And I think the speed limit is about fifteen miles an hour in that whole school zone. But that's what we'd have to do. It wouldn't be enforcement. But what we could do is build some overpasses or, like you said, narrow the roads or even move the sidewalks, you know, back just a little bit from the curb. And that would also be parts that we could use design to kind of limit and reduce the need for police enforcement.
Cool. Thanks. Steven?
Yes. Um, yeah, design is important because if there's a roundabout or something that is going to slow me down or keep my mind thinking, you know, sometimes we get put in this mode of when we're driving that we gotta get to that destination. We gotta get to that destination. So if you put in a roundabout in certain areas that have been identified with high traffic accidents, I think is very important. As far as like policing, growing up back in my days, we had safety control. I I don't hear much about safety patrols now or them, you know, working at the school, you know, as much or letting the students do that. Maybe it's due to the pandemic and may maybe it's due to just the safety. But there's other options that we can do to to really make safe walkways and driveways. In regards to policing, I'll go back to the Conflict Resolution Center. So individuals within the community will work directly with law enforcement. And I I will say in a form of a deputizing type of way because if something was to happen, then those residents could be identified by law enforcement previously before they get to the location. And that may be by a picture of some sort or being registered through the system. And that also would increase safety and maybe that'd be taking place during shifts. The morning time, we know that elementary, junior high, high school, individuals are going to school. And also, we got to think about the parents that aren't, that they they really depend on the bus system, you know. When my kids were, my older kids were younger, they took the school bus to school, you know, and I used to drive them to the to the bus stop. And or I would walk down to the bus stop to make sure that they were safe. I think having individuals in the community that are identified to help with that, I think is important. And also, like I said, the redesigning of certain areas for safety.
Great, thanks. I think we unfortunately are running out of time for questions, but I guess I just want to mention that there are a lot of other great questions in the chat. There's one about Will, from Will, about allowing diverse housing of all shapes and sizes to meet unique needs and support density. So that's something that he's working on with the Missing Middle Campaign. I think we're excited about seeing more of in Omaha. There's, and Marion put in a comment about growing immigrant and refugee populations in Millard and growing poverty and their interest in transportation solutions that serve western parts of Omaha as well. What else do we have? And then there's some more stuff going on in the chat, but I encourage folks to, if you want to engage in the chat before we close up. I guess I just wanted to really thank you all both for being here. I felt like we had a great conversation. And it was great to dig into these issues with you all and learn more about you and your campaigns. We are, I think we sent you both and all of the candidates for city council a questionnaire and we are gonna post that next week. Next Wednesday, we're having a member meeting and hosting in our series of hosting mayoral candidates. We're having Jasmine and Kimara, who are both running for mayor. Join us at the meeting next Wednesday at seven, so we hope that folks can join us then. And Sarah can maybe put stuff in the chat about that. Oh, yeah. And then if you guys want to share stuff about your candidacies in the chat, you can. I think someone already shared some stuff. Candidates, but uh, yeah, thank you all for being here and I feel like we had a great conversation and look forward to future coffee chats and meetings and continuing to engage around improving transportation for everybody in Omaha.
I just popped the link to become a member. I don't know if everyone on this call is already a Mode Shift member, but we would certainly appreciate your support in that way as well. And then, yeah, there's some some fun perks available if, once you become a member. You don't have to be a member to join our membership meetings, though. That's something I do get some questions about once in a while. So membership meetings are open to all, whether or not you're a card carrying member or not. And yeah, just want to echo, this was really awesome. We certainly appreciate your time and ideas and look forward to hearing more about you as we go through this process.
Cool. And then Sarah, we will share the recording of this and make and email it to everyone if folks here want to share it with other.
Yep, we'll put it on Facebook for sure. And then, yeah, I can email it or whatever if you'd like to reach out. Go ahead, do it. We'll get it out there.
Yeah, thank you for having me here. And, you know, this is an important subject matter. I just want to end off on this. The infrastructure of District Two has not changed much and I feel it has contributed to much of the accidents we see on our roadways. An ambitious project is taking place to redesign Twenty Fourth Street to a level that is supposed to support cutting traffic accidents. But at what cost? Like was mentioned in the comment section about the roundabout and its effect on the orbit system. City council has an important say in how these projects are formed and many questions will arise from these types of projects. It's important to get individuals ready in my district to work on these types of projects with trade skills, education, so that individuals in the community can take part in the rebuilding of the district. So thank you again, Mode Shift, for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Jonathan, you want to close this off?
Alright, so one thing, I said, transportation's always been a big part of my platform, which is, which it shouldn't have to be because transportation is a basic human right. Why are we having conversations about how to get people back and forth to jobs? Again, another basic human right. Transportation is to keep people safe. Safety is a basic human right. So we should not have to have these conversations about having transportation concerns. And that's what's so important about running for office at this point, at this juncture in Omaha. Why have these things not been addressed by our current representatives? Why are we having these conversations about, you know, a Class A bike or a Class C bike or, you know, how to get this trail put in or do we need roundabouts or, you know? We just have to get it done. You know, we've heard excuses for so many years about why we can't get things done. Why it's not possible to, you know, to get the sidewalks done. The city finds money to do everything else they need to do. They can find money to put a BART system between, a BRT between North and South Omaha. They can find money to make the sidewalks, you know, put them in the charter. You can find money to do what you, you can find money to do the necessities if you can find money to to put on outside ventures. And that's the way that I'd approach the city council. We'd have to work together as a team regardless if I'm District Two or if I'm District Seven out in Millard. We we have to be a team to make the entire city of Omaha better for the next generation. We need to have the complete street system. We need to have it more walkable, more bikeable and more drivable as a city. So that's why I'm glad that I was able to have this transportation conversation with the group this morning. I'm learning every day and I'm growing every day on how to become a better representative of all communities, not just, you know, my district. So thank you again and hope you all enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yo, Sarah, I got a quick question.